Okay, uh, welcome everyone to the January twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five Watership Planning Commission meeting. Um, I'd like to call this meeting to order. The time is now four oh one P M. The first item on the agenda is the election of officers. Usually it's the outgoing chair that starts the election, but our chair and vice chair's terms were up last last year, so we have no outgoing chair or outgoing vice chair to start the election, so staff will start it. The first order of business is to elect a new chair. Just to kind of give you an idea of some of the responsibilities of the chair. The chair leads the meetings and keeps the agenda moving forward. The chair also assigns certain documents that are in the packet, including the minutes. If the chair can't be at a meeting, then the vice chair would run the meeting. The chair and vice chair terms are one year, um, and then typically the vice chair becomes the chair the next year. So, uh, so with that, do we have any nominations for the chair for this commission for two thousand and twenty five? Don't be shy.
Sorry, I'm late. I just joined.
No worries, Commissioner Wagner, welcome.
Uh, this is Commissioner Schmidt. I would nominate Joe Phil for the chair.
I will second that. Go ahead, Clayton.
I will second that.
You've been running high for so many years, right?
Uh, so we have a first and a second. I can't remember. Do we need to call three times? Or since we have first and a second, we just accept that?
Well, just Melissa, if I might chime in, so you wouldn't need any motion or second on nominations, you would just call for three times? And then close the floor to nominations?
Okay, thank you.
And if, and if you only have one, then you can appoint the chair by acclamation.
Okay, thank you. So that was the first time. So do we have any other nominations for chair? Do we have any other nominations? Okay, I'll close nominations for chair and Commissioner Phil. Congratulations.
I accept.
Have I been voluntold?
I'm sorry?
I think I've been voluntold.
Yes, I think so.
I think so. I think so. So now that we have a new chair, Commissioner Phil, if you'd like to start nominations for vice chair?
All right, I will call for nominations for vice chair. Any nominations for vice chair? Any nominations for vice chair?
I'll nominate Brian.
Schmidt, I was gonna, I was gonna nominate you, Clayton.
No, no, no.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? One more time, are there any other nominations? Okay, do we congratulate, do we congratulate him on his nomination?
Uh, yes. Yes, Mr. Chair, so now we have a chair and a vice chair. Commissioner Phil is the chair for two thousand and twenty five and Commissioner Schmidt is the vice chair for two thousand and twenty five.
Thanks to our more tenured commissioners for stepping up there. Appreciate it.
What a great team. Okay, go ahead, Melissa.
I'm sorry, um, do we do the roll call for this action?
That I do not know.
Apologize.
I don't believe you need a roll call if there's no motion and you're just declaring the chair and vice chair by acclamation because there was only one and no votes occurring, then you would not have to.
Okay, thank you, Troy.
That makes sense. Okay, so we have our officers for two thousand and twenty five. Thank you very much for your endorsements, I guess. Number, the next item on the agenda is approval of the two thousand and twenty five meeting calendar. It's an action item.
Mr. Chair, if I may just quickly describe the calendar soon as Ryan gets to it on the agenda here. So the calendar, as you can see, the pink circle indicates the, the meeting dates. So the WPC meets every fourth Monday of the month. The only exception would be May. The fourth Monday is Memorial Day, so we moved up the meeting one week. So you'll see it's actually May nineteenth in May instead of the twenty sixth. This is a big planning year. The last few years, we've met mostly virtually and only once or twice in person. But this year, we, we plan on meeting in person at least three to four times. And one of those meetings will be the S M M O tour in September. We will know probably next month what months we will be meeting in person. Vanessa and I are still kind of discussing that. But they'll mostly be geared towards the plan update and certain exercises to get your input into different is at the plan, so. So with that, that's all I have to say about the calendar.
Any questions on the calendar? All right, I believe we have to take a vote. We're ready for the vote. All those in favor of the, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I would take a, a roll call because it's an action item, I believe.
Okay.
Bye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Hi.
Commissioner Wagner.
Is this on the calendar, action item?
Yes.
Approved.
Uh, Commissioner Barton.
Hi.
And Commissioner Fredericks. And Commissioner Phil.
Hi.
Did we have a motion to approve in a second? Think we might have missed that. I wouldn't, I would move to approve unless I've missed something, sorry.
No, Commissioner Wagner, I think you are correct. We would need that initial motion in second.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion after the fact. We don't need to go back in.
Hey, Mr. Barton, thank you very much. Do we have a second? As Commissioner Phillips, I'll second that motion. All right, thank you. So we've got a first and a second, and we've got the roll call vote. All right. Moving on then, uh, we have got the approval of the agenda and meeting minutes for the November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four minutes. Do we have a first and second? Or you want to do the roll call first? I'm kind of confused.
Sorry. I'll make a motion to approve, even though I was not there. I believe I can make the motion to approve it, but I will abstain from voting.
Commissioner Schmidt, I'll second.
Okay, we've got a first and a second. Now, Melissa, you want to do the roll call?
Yes, I'll do the roll call. Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Commissioner Phillips.
Hi.
Commissioner Phil.
Hi.
And I believe the rest of you have to abstain. Um, but I can go through the rest of the list because you weren't here. So Commissioner Wagner.
I will abstain.
Commissioner Burton.
I will abstain.
Commissioner Fredericks.
Staying.
Thank you, Commissioners. I think I hit every one difference.
Moving along then, um, the S S M W O Administrator Report, Vanessa. Is she on?
I don't see her on quite yet, uh, Mr. Chair, so maybe we can go to the next.
Circle back to that one. Bad quote, bad quote. Clayton, you get that one. Um, ongoing business. Let's, let's get the report from the SWCD.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you and good afternoon, Commissioners. So I will breeze through the report found in your packet. If there's any questions at the end of items that need more clarification or, or additional information, I'll provide that at the end. So we start out with the Technical Assistance and Cost Share Program. The chart show, there shows the active service requests for the last year running. You can see as of January, which is the far right set of columns, the blue line is the number of active requests within the Scott W O's jurisdictional area. So it's around a hundred and thirty. Of those a hundred and thirty, about seventy-five to eighty are actual projects. These are projects that are in various stages of development, implementation, or construction and closeout. So you can see, which is typical, that better than half of all the active service requests are projects. Moving down the Soil Health Practice Acres, this is not much change from the last meeting. Brian, would you be able to advance that a bit?
Uh, Troy, hold on one second. I ran into a snag here. I'm gonna have to stop sharing and reshare my screen. I can't see it. All right, can everyone see that now?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. So these two practices are just showing a, a couple of metrics associated with our Technical Assistance and Cost Share Program. The Soil Health shows the number of acres of, of those three different practices that we have utilized, uh, cost share funds or incentives to promote. And you can see obviously a twenty-four just blows away every previous year in terms of number of acres that were, uh, cost shared and installed. We almost hit thirty-five hundred. The Equipment Rental Program Acres, um, I thought twenty-one and twenty-two were going to be about the most acres we'd ever get on the ground. Uh, but we surpassed that this year again. Um, and we almost hit three thousand acres. So that's the number of acres that are no-till slash conservation equipment was rented out to landowners with throughout the, throughout the county. And this is countywide, so it does include uh, other watershed districts in which those, uh, pieces of equipment were utilized. The Soil Health Practices is the same, that's countywide. But it's safe to assume that the vast majority of each of those is within the W M O, seeing the W M O covers the lion's share of the area within Scott County. Uh, Cost Share Funds, what this does is show, uh, in terms of an active awards or budgets that we have on the books right now. We have a little over eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in awards and have encumbered a little over fifty, well, let's say fifty-four percent of those already. That means that these are carryover grants that we've already used some of the funding up for. Uh, there is some new funding in there because we started at a fiscal year. But the upshot is we have a little over three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars of cost share within the Scott W M O at the current time. So we got a lot of work to do. Uh, what we're going to be doing, when you look at that number, the three hundred and seventy-three thousand, and then you look above where we have a lower number of active service requests, what that tells us is we need to like start putting our, uh, foot on the gas a bit in terms of marketing and reaching out to landowners, doing some outreach letters, door knocking and things like that to actually promote, um, the tax program, promote the funding availability for priority areas and priority projects. And we actually are underway with that effort. So over the next couple of months, we'll be doing a lot of that outreach, marketing and, um, and door knocking. To, because our goal is to move all that money this year. Clean Water Education Program, uh, so we honored the, yes.
Sorry, this is Commissioner Fredericks. I have a question. Does, does that funding go away if it's not spent? Or at what point does the funding go away if it's not spent?
Yes, uh, Mr. Fr, Commissioner Fredericks, um, that's a good question. So some of that will go away. For example, funding that is provided through the Scott W M O's budget through the local levy, those are only usable within the current budget year or fiscal year. So a piece of that funding, a piece of that eight, uh, seven hundred and one thousand is the W M O budget and will expire as of December thirty-first. Now, there's also grant funds embedded in that number. Some of those grants expire this year. I think, uh, Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, but like a portion of that is EPA funding. There's maybe what, fifty to a hundred thousand EPA funding that, that will expire actually in August. Um, other grants might expire December thirty-one this year, but some grants, I'd have to check the exact expiration. Uh, but a grant could go multiple years beyond this year. But if I'm not mistaken, most of this year actually does expire this year. Uh, but we will be getting another grant, I think, at some point here in the near future. That will be added onto this amount that will expire three years from now. So if you see that number grow up, we're going to be getting a grant that, that would extend beyond the current year.
So if it expires, would I understand then that it would almost need to come back again as if it was new funding or?
Correct. If it expires then, and it's the W M O's from the W M O's budget, your budget, it will go back into your fund balance for basically consideration for use of next year, but it doesn't automatically re, uh, base a rollover.
Then it would be stacked up against other priorities at that point in time, and then maybe that project would go forward, or maybe a different project would in its place.
Exactly. It's like, uh, you start at the, a starting line all over and you decide what your priorities are, and if you put it back towards cost share, that's fine. Otherwise, if there's other priorities, you could, you know, it's your discretion.
So definitely kind of use it or lose it.
Correct, correct, yep, exactly. And in fact, this year, we did not use it all. We have so much grant funds that we didn't use all the local funds, so that did go back into fund balance for the, to the W M O. If, it, on, on the other hand, if grant funds, if we lose, if we do not use them and the grant expires, they go back to the state and they, you know, good luck getting them back ever.
Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome. So, uh, moving on to Clean Water Education, so we honored, uh, Maxine Hughes. She's a resident on, on O'Dowd Lake. Uh, she was recognized at the State Conservationist of the Year, uh, Conservation Leader Banquet in Bloomington. Uh, she was actually the Area Four finalist. So our association has eight different areas throughout the state, one of which is the metro. And out of all eleven metro counties, Maxine Hughes was, was voted the, uh, area winner. Uh, so we were happy to host her at that event and recognize her for all the great things she does on her property and in the community. Um, we began discussion with city reps on designing this and distributing postcards for maintenance professionals and proper salt application. So this is a time of year, we do work with our, all our partners on promoting, uh, proper salt use. Uh, we began compiling, as we do each year, this time, uh, our annual report as well as our proposed work plan, and then we will be meeting with all our, uh, SQUEP partners coming up in here in February and talking about priorities and projects for the coming year. Uh, water quality, so we finished up the large Sand Creek Water Quality Monitoring Project for the year. We submitted all that data. And, uh, we also submitted a application or a proposal to do additional monitoring through the, what's called the SWAG program or Surface Water Assessment Grant with M P C A, and we'll be monitoring a number of, uh, streams and lakes within the Scott W M O through that, through that grant project as well.
Where are those new monitoring sites that you've never done before, or you're?
Some are I would have to say we probably monitored everyone at some point before, but not regularly.
Is that, is the SWAG grant, is that new, or is that a rolling one that?
Uh, every ten years. So we did a, a sweep of sites, both streams and lakes about ten years ago, so twenty fifteen uh, and twenty sixteen, and now M P C A comes back every ten years to do their intensive water quality monitoring as part of their, uh, RAPS program. So now it's up again, the Lower Minnesota River Watershed is, is, you know, hit that ten-year mark. So we're doing it there. And we have seven streams in Scott County, four lakes in Scott County, including, Melissa, help me, I think it's Cedar, McMahon, O'Dowd, and one other.
Uh, is it Tholl?
I, I believe it is Tholl, yes. And then we have two lakes in Rice County, Phelps and Cody.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Uh, the groundwater observation well, so this is a D N R program. We have nineteen or so wells around the county where we collect data in on a, a data on a quarterly basis to monitor groundwater levels. And every once in a while, we'll issue, uh, prepare a report and, and share that with the commissioners on what the trends have been and what the current status is of, of water levels. The precipitation graph just shows a two-year rolling, um, data of the comparing the average amount of rainfall that we receive here at the Jordan Field Office compared to what we actually measured. So you can see for the month of December, uh, we're a little bit behind on the snowfall, so therefore you see the discrepancy between the average and what we actually uh, read, uh, for the month of December. Construction Order Control, so this graph, the, the bars show the number of inspections we completed, both permit and development. So permits are like homes, principal structures, additions, garages, things like that. So for the month of December, we did almost a one hundred inspections, uh, which is understandably lower than what we would do during the summer and construction period. The purple line shows the, um, number of plan reviews we conducted for the month, and you can see that number is, is on the downswing, uh, which we do expect to see typically this time of year. Um, and that is shown by the, the number on the, uh, numbers on the right side of the graph. So what about I'd say maybe five, six different plan reviews for December, uh, but it's been highest fifteen, uh, in the past per month. Subwaterside Assessments, so we completed the first draft of the Raven Two Stream. Um, that's in my court. Uh, our, our team member Chase Emers, uh, finished the Phase Two Report. He also finished the Phase One for Raven Stream. We're going to deliver that to the W M O together as a package. Uh, as soon as we get through the, um, state grant reporting season here, I'll be able to focus on that and turn that over to Ryan and Melissa and Vanessa for, for their review. Uh, Wetland Conservation Act, uh, we typically don't have a lot of action this time of year, so you won't see a whole lot there. Uh, just a couple of T E P meetings really, uh, with various city partners. I'll skip down, Ryan, I think. The last thing I'll touch on is, um, the buffer law and the native tree mix, our tree program. So buffers, we complete a annual status review on one-third of all the buffers uh, every year. So we have the county divided into three segments or sectors, if you will, and we did the Southwest Sector this past time, which is Blakely, Bell Plain, Helena, and that whole area. We did find, uh, probably two dozen parcels where we, uh, found the, uh, buffer, the required buffer to fall below the thirty-foot minimum or, and or fifty-foot average. Uh, but we suspect maybe as much as a third of those are, are actually not compliant. The other two-thirds, um, they're, they're found to be less than those minimum footage. However, there are certain nuances to the law that allows, uh, reduced widths, and, uh, we feel that they may be basically, uh, falling under some of those, um, exemptions. One would be, for example, enrollment in C R P. So if, um, one of the buffers, if a buffer is enrolled in the Conservation Reserve Program, basically they're exempt from the buffer law requirement. Another example is if they use what's called alternative practices. For example, let's say they're doing no-till uh, on a field. They could potentially reduce their buffer width down to a minimum of twenty-five feet. So there are scenarios where you can be less than thirty feet, and so knowing exactly what the farmer is doing or what, uh, program they may or may not be enrolled in takes some time. But our initial estimate is that maybe eight are, are out of compliance and maybe don't fall in align with one of those exemptions. Uh, finally, I'll just mention that, uh, we opened up our tree sale in January one. Uh, we're already sold out out of a couple of species, and, and so if, um, any of the commissioners are interested in ordering trees through our program this year, the sooner, uh, the better. The last time, I think I got a couple of tables there, Ryan. So, uh, for the new commissioners, each month, what I do is report on actions that we have taken, either by staff action or by board action, to approve new cost share applications through the Technical Assistance and Cost Share Program. So you can see, we approved a, a little over forty-nine thousand dollars in new applications. And this is through December and January. So if, if, uh, the commission skips a month, I'll report on both of those months at the same time. And then payments list was extremely long, and you see we did a little over fifty thousand dollars in payments as well during that segment.
Troy, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this is Commissioner Phillips. Uh, just, if you scroll up on there, what was a well decommissioning? Is that a? What is that, the top one?
So, so a well decommissioned commissioner is where, um, a, a licensed well contractor comes in and actually decommissioned a active well, or maybe it was a non-functioning well, but the well casing was still open and therefore susceptible to inviting contamination into the groundwater. So a decommission is to basically utilize either cement or something called clay, betonite clay that actually get, fills that whole well casing. They remove the pump, all the wires, and backfill that casing with concrete or this betonite clay, which permanently seals that, so it prevents, uh, contamination through that opening in the ground.
Gotcha. So it's a basically a well abandonment.
Abandonment, correct.
Same thing. Okay, gotcha. I
Yep, in fact, those, those terms are used interchangeably.
Gotcha. Thank you for that. I, uh, I just didn't know we, we paid for it, but it makes sense. It's a point of contamination and potential, you know, groundwater contamination, so I suppose um, abandoning them is a, uh, one of our, kind of our services we provide.
Correct, and it is a, a priority practice, and you'll see the thousand dollars there on the right side. So that's two wells. Uh, Mr. Feldman actually had two wells that were abandoned. Typically, you would see five hundred and five hundred, so that's our maximum, one thousand per well. So since he had two wells, he received two thousand dollars.
Got it, thank you.
Certainly. And with that, I'll conclude my report and stand by for any questions.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions for Troy? Troy, it's, uh, Commissioner Phillips again. A quick question, I did see this is a little off topic, but I did see in the last, uh, it might have been a couple articles ago on the Scott County scene. Um, there was a contact person for, um, stenciling storm drains. Can you tell me who that person is?
Yes, that would be Shelby Roberts. He's our Outreach and Education Specialist.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Troy? All right, do you have anything else for us, Troy?
Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Okay, let's go move on to program updates. Ryan?
Sheriff Commissioners, good afternoon. Um, just to kind of give everyone, the new commissioners heads up of, uh, kind of this item, because it'll be an ongoing item every, excuse me, every meeting. Both Melissa and I kind of give highlights over the past, since we've met last, of kind of what we're working on and, uh, maybe anything that's kind of upcoming. Um, and so for, for myself, um, last we had met was in November, and I had, uh, informed the commissioners that we had an acceptable bid for our, um, Pika Creek Ravine Stabilization. the commissioners that we had an acceptable bid for our um, Pika Creek Ravine Stabilization Project. Um, and that bid was roughly six hundred and fifty three thousand. And the winning uh, bid went to a Vite uh, Company Incorporated. And they have since started the project. So they started about mid-December uh, with the idea that the we would want them to be substantially complete with that project by the end of February. And the reason for that timeline is that uh, when working in a ravine setting um, that handles flow, uh, once the snow starts to melt and and in March, we tend to get um, you know, periods of higher precipitation, uh, we we kind of want to be done and out of there at that point. Um. But the reason why it's not fully complete is there is a component where we want uh, live, in this case shrubs planted um, within some of these structures for vegetation. And so obviously that um, wouldn't be possible in in winter months. So um, substantially complete means basically all the structural components of the project are complete. And then um, the remaining portion that uh, they still need to work on, they come back between April and June and do the uh, the actual shrub planting. So we have projects underway. Um, they're probably roughly at the halfway point. Um, so we're feeling good in terms of um, excuse me, in terms of meeting that uh, February deadline. Um, when they first started, it was um, fairly difficult for access up and down the the ravine. Um, and like Troy's been out there before and it uh, um, not not the easiest site. Uh, that was kind of one of the challenges that we thought was that um, access just getting up and down the ravine was going to be tough. Um, the contractor has kind of mitigated that. They've done a good job of de-watering. There is flowing water um, at the tail end of the project. It's kind of interesting. There's uh, water up at the top, um, mostly seepage uh, coming out of the side slopes. And then in the middle, where they're at right now, it's almost pure sand. There's there's no moisture whatsoever. And then down at the bottom, you actually have flowing water. So um, that was kind of one of the challenges of this project, but um, they're doing a good job and with the warm weather this week, they're actually at a great spot uh, to be where they're at in the sandy area where it's dry. So um, hopefully this can kind of keep them moving along. And um, and like I said, we're still anticipating that that project should be done um, at the end of February. And then uh, I don't know if it'll be this year, but I'm assuming at one of these uh, upcoming tours, we will um, go out there and take a look at it and you can actually see um, you know, the project itself and all the work that we did and and I'll likely be the one kind of giving that that talk and presentation about all the things that went into it. I will also, once this project is done, likely March where it's substantially complete, I'll put together a PowerPoint and I'll present it to the commissioners as well um, at our meeting and just kind of walk you through all the different stages of the project from start to finish. And um, kind of show you all the exciting and fun things that uh, that we're working on this past winter. So now that's consuming a lot of my time uh, right now. And then the other component, the only other update I really have uh, for this meeting is that um, we're talking a little bit about grants earlier. Commissioner Fredericks and Troy were kind of going um, talking about them. And so those grants all have reporting requirements that are uh, due. And um, they all kind of fall within the same timeframe. There grants through MPCA and also Bowser. So uh, MPCA stands for Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. And Bowser stands for the Board of Water and Soil Resources. So those um, have been kind of our bigger partners in terms of grants lately. And um, we've got a number of grants with them that are paying for some of the CIPs like the Pika Creek Project. We did a stream bank project last winter. Uh, one of the grants paid for a portion of that as well. And so what we have to do as staff is basically um, any expenditures that we had towards these grants, we have to report on that. Um, go into the state system, it's called E-Link. Uh, it's their reporting uh, software and uh, upload our invoices, our um, time that we've put towards the project. So there's a whole slew of kind of things that you have to go through and upload and then they review it. Um, and we're kind of in the the heart of that right now. So everything's basically due this Saturday. So uh, needless to say with the, you know, construction project and this reporting, and I I think I got five of these grants to report on. Um, it's a busy week and uh, and also we utilize the soil and water for uh, some of the components of these grants. So when we're talking about the cost share projects, um, you know, that's where the soil and water is is kind of doing a lot of the work in terms of getting those projects in the ground. Um, all the contracts and uh, applications, status reviews, all of those. So we work hand in hand with them um, on these. And so, you know, when we get to this point in reporting, you know, we're having those conversations back and forth about documentation and what we need and and all that. So um, they're fantastic to work with and um, and we're making some progress on it. And uh, with that, I'll stand for any questions about either of those items.
Any questions for Ryan?
Mr. Barton, no questions, Ryan, but it sounds like a great project. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a lot of information, Ryan. Thank you. It's uh, nice to see you're probably putting in forty hours now. That's great.
Yeah, I think there's uh, some weeks where it's more, so.
Any other questions for Ryan? Going once, going twice. Okay, we'll just move on to uh, the program updates with Melissa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, before I start those, I just want to apologize for the first part of the agenda and stumbling through that. I just realized that I don't know if I've ever done the election for this commission before, so I apologize that we stumbled through that a little bit, but um. So I just have a few updates for you. So last year, the DNR announced their aquatic basin species grant um, application process was open, so I applied for that for four different lakes, Cedar, McMahon, O'Dowd and Thol. Um, I did reach out to them today because we haven't heard anything and they indicated they're still reviewing those applications. Um. And they hope to reach out um, hopefully by next week uh, to let us know. Um, they do send out what's called an unofficial um, notice which they'll send out to everyone, that either people who were selected or who weren't selected. Uh, but basically they said that um, we should know for sure. Uh, either within a week and then sometime in early March, we would um, have the uh, grant funds to be able to um, apply towards either one of the lakes if we if we do um, get selected. So um, we do to the new commissioners, we do have a um, indoor land and water treatment program. We do treat for curly leaf on four different lakes, all the the lakes I just mentioned, Cedar, McMahon, O'Dowd and Thol. Uh, we do partner with lake associations and the Lake Improvement District when we can. Um. So with Cedar Lake, Cedar Lake is a very large lake, it's eight hundred acre, eight hundred acres. And so the planning for that occurs in December. So myself, the DNR and the Lake Improvement District meet to talk about the treatment plan for Cedar in the following year. Um, we have been doing whole lake treatments on Cedar. Those occur shortly after ice out. So I have already applied for that permit and that permit was approved by the DNR. So Cedar Lake would be all ready to go for our uh, treatment vendor uh, when ice out occurs. Uh, but for the other lakes, um, McMahon, O'Dowd and Thol, I do need to go out and do a delineation survey on those and I typically do that in May. And then what I do is I um, look for curly leaf and I record it in a field um, application uh, on my iPad that I have. And then I create a map and that gets sent to the DNR to show where curly leaf is occurring. And then they kind of draw in treatment areas that we, that they'll approve us to treat for curly leaf on those lakes. So um. I have been working on and started in twenty twenty four, a survey with the University of Minnesota. This is our third time doing this survey with them. The first time it was in two thousand and eleven. And then in twenty eighteen. Um, and then this survey is to help us gather more information to inform this watershed plan update. Uh, but in twenty twenty four, we sent out fifteen hundred surveys to different um, residents in the Scott WMO area. Um, we only got about four hundred and four surveys back. Um, so it's about twenty eight percent response rate. So we've decided uh, with you of them that we're going to do one more mailing at the end of February to try to get some more responses. Um. But the in the questions that we did ask in there are going to help inform this next plan. And then my last update is that um, I've got three grant projects that are being funded by the Watershed Based Implementation Funding uh, for twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. I'm still waiting for Bar Engineering to give me some quotes on one of those projects. Um, and then once I get that, hopefully this week, um, that I can give that information to Ryan and he can input the work plan into E-Link. And we can start that grant agreement process to get those grants um, get those grants in and start working on the projects. Um, and that's all I have for that at the moment. I can stand for any questions if anybody has any.
Any questions from Melissa? Don't be shy. Come on, someone's got a question. All right, thank you, Melissa. Moving right along to uh, new business. We have got the tax application. Uh, if you want to go and run through, Ryan?
Actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, there's one item still under ongoing business.
I missed it, your watershed plan update, I'm sorry.
Yes, and Ryan, if you could scroll up because that item is up in front of these. Nope, too far. It's right after Troy's packet. It's the milestones sheet. Right there. Yep. Okay, um, so this will be uh, an item on the agenda every month under old business. I put together this milestones sheet just to kind of give you an idea of where we are in the plan update process. So this first section, sorry, I can't scroll. I'm gonna have to have you scroll for me, Ryan. But this first section, um, number ten. Um, that's ongoing, that's a part of the plan. Um, the water, the land and water resource inventory. Um, all staff is working on different sections of that, that we should have that done in April. That's the goal. And then we can give you that as like a draft chapter to read. Um. We are the the ongoing um, of advertising for public engagement opportunities. You know, we did that all through phase one. Uh, but phase two, we will continue to do that. Um, so that's why I left that as an ongoing item. Um, a lot of things are complete, as you can see in green. Line eighteen, the IDing of the major issues to address. Um, we still have to yet go to our county board um, to kind of have them you know, say, yep, we're okay with these kind of final issue statements. Our intent was to go to them in February. Um, but we found out after the packet went out that now that workshop date is full. And so we're, we need to push it out a little bit further, but we are going to continue to work on um, drafting some goals based on the issue statements that we kind of feel we know are going to continue into this next plan. Um, and so next month I'll bring you those issue statements and maybe some draft changes that we might have to those based on the input we received in phase one. Um. As you can see on line twenty four, that's where we are today is at this meeting and um, we'll have you do a prioritization exercise at the end of this meeting. But our intent for line twenty six was to go to the SWMO board in February. That's now getting moved to March. Um. And then if you want to scroll down a little bit further, so this I, okay, you can stop there. So this document, I'd like to label it instead of draft is um, I'd like to label it as a living document, but I couldn't customize that uh, stamp there. But um, so this will change as kind of we move through the different tasks and make some adjustments, but the plan at the moment is to, in February, March, staff will kind of go through some of the goals and start maybe making some changes to those. I have a meeting set for March twelfth for the next TAC workshop, which they will go over the goal statements. Once we kind of have some draft goal statements from their input, I'm going to do a needs assessment exercise with them. Basically, what they're going to do is the goal statement will be stated and they're going to tell us what do we need to do in order to meet that goal. And so with all those needs that they end up listing there, then I'll work on a gaps analysis to figure out are we missing anything or are our programs that we already have covering what they say we need to do to meet that goal? So my hope is in March to do that same exercise with you. So March might be our first in-person meeting with you. Um, at least that's the plan at the moment. And then, so April will be kind of figuring out what our gaps are. And then again in May is my kind of uh, target date to go over what do we want to prioritize? You know, what does that look like? Because for this plan, we have to prioritize and we have to target. Um, and we'll go over it, we'll get into more detail on that um, this spring. But I just want to kind of give you an idea of kind of what the next steps are and kind of the the draft timeline for those. So that's all I have so far with this. Again, it's it will probably change a little bit by next month as we kind of refine more things. But with that, does anyone have any questions on this sheet at all?
So I'm Clayton Wagner. Uh, I'm extremely new to this group, obviously. Could you speak to with regard to these goals? What is coming down on high from the federal level, state level, and how much latitude the county has with regard to shaping the future of our WMO?
Did I see, oh, Vanessa's on. Vanessa, do you want to tackle that?
Absolutely. Um. It's an excellent question, Commissioner Wagner. Um. It's it's two parts. Just for clarification, are you asking about what affect the county has versus the WMO or just kind of this body in general?
All would be great because I'm
Okay.
learning it all. Uh, I guess um, yeah, with regard to this body and with regard to um, I s- I suppose there's different WMOs for each. Yeah, go ahead.
Nope, it it's a very excellent question. And um, you are, we're very brave to to um, volunteer to one of the most uniquely organized WMOs in the state. There are only two that are organized like us. Most other watershed districts, watershed management organizations in the state of Minnesota are um, freestanding entities. There's only two that are actually operated by a county, us and Carver County WMO. Um, there are some uh, that are operated by Southern Quarter Conservation Districts, but you know, generally speaking, we're pretty unique. So you don't often have a situation where um, you have the entire watershed agency, uh, their board, their governing board uh, happens to also be the county board. So uh, a similar example is the Vermillion Joint Powers Organization, which does uh, split between Scott and Carver, uh, Scott and Dakota County. And that one does obviously have a couple of commissioners from car uh, Scott County and a couple of commissioners from Dakota County. But we're unique. Your your entire board is made up of your county commissioners. Um, you'll notice we have a county liaison, Commissioner Brennan is here. She's one of your county commissioners, obviously. So to that end, uh, the Scott WMO, our watershed management plan uh, is also adopted by the county as their water resource plan of their big county comprehensive plan. Uh, part of the reason why we're trying to get this done now is so that they can bowl it in there. So in that extent, we probably have a little bit more influence as a WMO is as far as how water resources operate in the county than most. So that's that piece. Uh, as far as what's govern, what's up, what's required by the federal government to this level, state law has pretty much equal or gone above what's federally required. Um, so there are federal rules and regulations. But in this extent, it's mostly state regulations, mainly through the Board of Water and Soil Resources. It does identify certain things that we have to address in our plan, and it does say we have to have goals. What those goals are, are actually decided by the planning process. So the citizens, the residents, our technical advisory committee, and then our WPC. Uh, and then you feed that all to the board. So And then you feed that all to the board. So in that extent, you have a lot a lot of influence to help guide and, and determine that. And then from like a regulatory standpoint, obviously, when our plan becomes the county's plan, that also affects development and ordinances. So, but it is primarily state level. Now, in other states, it's a little different, but Minnesota has I don't want to say aggressive is not the right word, but we're very proactive in the state of Minnesota with our water resources role, so we're more robust than the federal government to begin with, so.
So, thank you for that, Vanessa.
Is that helpful?
That is helpful, I guess. I, just to prod a little bit further. Analogous to how a township would be, the county may dictate the, the future plan, the ten-year plan of, of land use. You know, what's considered retail or residential, et cetera. And the township can be a little more restrictive, but they can't be less restrictive, or that's how I understand it. How, like, I guess, how does that equate to water resource management? Is it the same?
Um, yes, in as much as our portion of the water resource guidance that we create here in the WMO is what guides those land use requirements by the, the townships and the cities and the county. So in this case, many of our townships have for one reason or other, the county is the zoning authority and some of them have a few more restrictive requirements, but by and large, most of our townships have the county doing their, their zoning authority. Almost I'm, I'm thinking, I'm literally going through in my head, I'm trying to think of those that might have more restrictive in the townships, water resource requirements. Some will only because they're within a different watershed district in some areas. So if you were within the Prior Lake, Spring Lake Watershed District and a couple within the Lower Minnesota River Watershed District, in a couple areas, they have more restrictive water resource requirements. But that is the watershed district providing guidance to those cities and townships, and then they kind of have to adopt those into that information.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Vanessa.
I, I unfortunately enjoy talking about this, which can be a little problematic. So I'm trying to keep it short today because
I'm sure I'll have more questions and I will find your email and take it offline if I need to. But I want to thank the other commissioners for letting, letting me, um, letting me kind of go off on a tangent, so.
No, no, that's much appreciated, Commissioner Wagner. And again, you know, we have a lot of great commissioners also here, I mean, Commissioner Schmidt, Commissioner Phillips, you know, they both have their own experiences, Commissioner Thill has been here for a long time. You know, Commissioner Barton, even though he's new, obviously has a lot of, and so anybody else is, unless, Ryan, if anybody else has an idea, you can always jump in as well. So, doesn't have to just be me.
Thanks for all that, Vanessa, that's what question I was going to ask on behalf of the, the new folks is to the explanation of how we work with the county and the township, so you took that from me, that's perfect. Perfect. So, and do you have anything else, Vanessa?
Oh, no, I do not. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, Melissa, we good to move on?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Move on to new business now.
Sorry, I had a question, this is Jay Fredericks. So I kind of consume the input that's been received from both the public and other concerned parties. I, I guess, just a basic question is, you know, there's still maybe some more outreach going on, but do you have everything you need in order to kind of complete the work or are there gaps or inputs that you would still need washed in to finish the work?
Yes, Commissioner Fredericks, we will do a phase two. I think that it's important to get input, especially from the lake groups, because we did a separate surveys with Cedar, Lake Improvement District, McMahon, O'Dowden, Thole Lakes, and as part of phase two, which I plan on doing in June, is to get input from them on what management actions we need to do on those lakes to keep improving them. We will also do, we think it's important to get a little bit more input from the public. We think we got a pretty good pretty good number of people giving input this time, but we did a pretty robust public engagement plan. And we got way more input this time than we did previous plans. I think it would be important to have people, at least for phase two, I think some kind of a strategy input, some kind of interactive exercises, what we would like to do sometime in June with even just the general public. Which I think would inform kind of shaping our programs to see if we need to make any changes to any of our programs or to any of our, our strategies in our, that are in our current plan. Or maybe some information that we don't realize that we might need, you know, so.
It sounds like, so again, to be clear, I totally get it. More input is better, that's kind of an endless thing, right? But I guess I was asking if there was maybe something more surgical that you needed to you know, suss out, and it sounded like that that was the case with the lake groups you mentioned, and then it sounded like maybe you had some different approaches that might get you some different inputs. In addition to just, you know, again, more the merrier, that, that's certainly the case. Did, did I understand that correctly?
Yes, and I, and I would also add that, you know, when I do that gaps analysis to figure out, do we have any gaps anywhere? I think that might kind of also help inform how we shape that phase two input process.
Okay, thank you.
And I would, I would add Commissioner Fredericks to what Melissa said is because we are taking these in pieces, right now, we're looking at primarily the issues. And because the input that we received from the public and our technical advisory committee, which means, you know, that's our cities, townships and so on, is very similar to the issues that we received last time. And we don't have any really unique outliers that are making us question, do we have enough information on these issues? I think we feel very comfortable right now that we have enough input on the issues. So for that piece, I think we're good. I, it's, as Melissa said, there are a couple pieces coming up that we might not. But we'll see how those shake out and we will certainly let you know if we don't feel comfortable with the information we have. And we'll look to you for recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Barton, I would say overall, very impressed with the extent of outreach you've done so far. A lot of different events, a lot of mailings and even almost thirty percent response rate, that's pretty good. And so it makes sense to kind of do a little bit further with lake organizations. And I was wondering if you, if there's like any sportsman's groups or groups like that, because you have the people that live on the lake and the people that live on the lake have typically similar opinions about their particular water body. But then you might be, kind of get some different opinions when it comes to the people that are bopping around different lakes for fishing.
Yep, that's a, that's a good question, Commissioner Barton, and I did invite those sportsmen's groups to the phase one public input process, so I did include those groups on those emails. I didn't include them to do the specific lake resident survey, but they were included to do the overall public input survey for the issues and concerns and I don't know for sure if they did it because it's all, you know, anonymous, we don't know who actually filled it out, but, but they were invited, yeah.
Thank you. I'm gonna have to hop off the call since I have, since I'm speaking right now, I'm gonna have to hop off in five minutes, but just an idea, probably not for now, but for next time, maybe we have a little bit of time at the beginning, just to have a little intro with all of the new commissioners. And just a little bit on our professional backgrounds, personal backgrounds, where we live and why we joined the group.
Right, that sounds great. In fact, that was on my, my notes here toward the end of the meeting, so let's, if we can put that on the agenda for next meeting, I think that'd be a great idea. Before you leave, I wanted to say, at the end of the meeting, but I'll do it right now, I just wanted to say welcome to the new members and appreciate the insights and skills that you're going to bring, bring to us and as well as, as well as understanding staff and their different roles, it's, it's incredible group, it's very informative and they're usually way above my head. But I appreciate all of it, thank you. Okay, with that, and if you've got to leave, Mr. Barton, that's totally understandable, I under, we all understand. I think we can move on to Ryan's new business.
Sure, commissioners, so these next three items are all information items. And one thing to note is that these would typically be action items and I will explain why they're information here, but just wanted to kind of clarify that. So the first two that we're going to go through, the first one is going to be Jim Jerison's filter ship reenrollment contract. And so this is a contract where Jim Jerison has planted a filter ship along a tributary stream, that contract expired and he was looking to re-enroll it in our program. And to give you kind of some background on re-enrollments, our current plan, we don't have a heavy emphasis on, on re-enrollments. But why this one is here is we have come up with kind of a prioritization and the SWCD staff actually goes through proactively looking at contracts that are going to expire. Filter ship and native grasses are to kind of incentivize practices. And I guess tree and shrub is too now, but a lot of these are filter ships because the native grass program didn't kind of get going until a little bit later, the filter ships kind of were the first ones to go. So we typically see more of those coming up for re-enrollment. And so what they do is we've set fourth criteria that because our current plan, it, it talks about incentivizing change but not sustaining it. And that would necess, that would mean that we're, you know, not heavily emphasizing doing re-enrollments because it will hinder you moving forward, getting progress, moving forward, so. Part of it too is the hope that by incentivizing it to start, that maybe the landowner appreciates it, you know, sees the value in it and is willing to leave it in beyond the contract term. That maybe the financials of it weren't the biggest driver. So, just to kind of give you the background on that, so this one though, did end up as sort of that tier one. I think it's four tiers, they break them down into, and really we only fund the, the tier one projects and it might not even be all the tier one projects. We set sort of within our budget, we parcel out a small amount of it to go towards these re-enrollments, so that way you know, it, it wouldn't eat up a lot of our budget, so. Those are kind of the, the ways that we mitigate the, not putting a lot of money towards these. So with that, for the background, this is a one point eight acre filter ship, the rate for re-enrollments is a hundred dollars per acre, which equates to eighteen hundred dollars. And that's for a one-time tenure contract, so there is no opportunity to re-enroll it after this one additional contract, so it's, it's very black and white that this is a one-time deal. And they get ten more years and then after that, then it's not eligible anymore for re-enrolling. So why it's informational is that we wanted to utilize, we were talking about, Commissioner Fredericks was talking about earlier, the use it or lose it. So we didn't have a December WPC meeting, thus a number of years ago, I think it was two years ago, the WPC approved Vanessa being able to administratively approve up to her amount that she's authorized by the county to approve contracts, so that's fifty thousand, so this falls well within under that threshold. And so it's been administratively already approved, and so we're just bringing it to your attention that you know that this would have normally went to you, but because of the end of the year and trying to utilize those funds, we did need to approve it prior to the January twenty twenty five meeting, so. I guess I'll stand for any questions on this one and then we'll, we can kind of move on to the next one.
Clayton Wagner again. How, I guess, how many of these re-enrollments do we have? How often do you have the landowner requesting to jump in for another ten?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Wagner, very, very little. And the idea is to be proactive that if we, we want to go to the ones we want to re-enroll less than waiting for them to come to us and re-enroll. So that's why there, the Solen Water is going out and identifying the really top-tier projects that are going to be expiring, and then we kind of go to them and say, well, are you interested in, in re-enrolling? And if they are, then they can sign up, and if they're not, that's completely fine too. So for this year, to answer, if it helps, put it into context, we have two. It's this one and the next one we're going to talk about, so. And they total, you know, a few thousand dollars, so. The cap we've been using is ten percent of our overall budget. And if we don't use it towards re-Enrolls, then it gets opened up to other projects, so we usually know at about September, October-ish, how many we're looking at, and then if we don't have, you know, up to the twenty thousand, then we'll use those funds for, you know, new projects.
Thank you.
So this is Jay Fredericks's question, so for those that don't re-enroll or, or we don't seek their re-enrollment, what actually statistically happens? Do they longer keep the, the the filter strip or do they keep the filter strip whether we do or don't renew?
It's a great question, and we have actually created, I guess, a subgroup of staff from the Solen Water in the WMO. And it's something we're curious to see too, how many of these are actually staying in beyond the term? It would be nice to build up a database to sort of have a better idea of you know, sixty percent of landowners leave their filter ships in five years after the terms have expired. Just to sort of know that. So basically, once their contract expires, they are free to do whatever they want. Now, some of these filter ships fall under the buffer law, and if they fall under the buffer law, which requires them to have perennial vegetation, we don't offer the, the caution to those, it's already a requirement and, and we're not tacking onto that. So, yeah, we're, we're still kind of figuring out what are a lot of people doing? And so how we would determine if they're still in is you can do aerial photography review. So we it's not annual, but it's close to annual, we have aerial imagery flown in Scott County and that's available to the public staff too. Where you can actually go through and you can, you know, toggle between, you know, two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-four and you can see if that filter ship was removed, you know, if that, if their expiration date was twenty twenty-three, you know, is it there in twenty-two? It's not there in twenty-four, you would know that it's gone, so. So we are in the process of trying to figure that out too, if that answers your question.
I think it's an interesting question, because you know, I mean, in a perfect world, people would be incented just to leave it in place. I guess you don't want to reward the people who, you know, are only doing it for the money, so to speak, as opposed to whatever, so it's just kind of an interesting situation and question. You know, to ask, so, thanks for that.
Yeah, no, you're right, it is interesting, and this is sort of leaving a little bit of you know, the possibility that if, if there is just a really good site and we, and as the WMO, we want to see it stay in, this opens that door for us to be able to, to do that. But yes, you're right, if, if it's driven by financials, then eventually it will be taken out, you know, because at some point, there is no more opportunities for re-enrollment, so. Perfect world, you're right, they stay in, but, you know, we realize that's not the case, I mean.
Something, sorry, and again, just if I go off on a tangent, I can, you know, follow up offline, so everyone doesn't have to go through my If I go off on a tangent, I can, you know, follow up offline, uh, so everyone doesn't have to go through my education process, but. Um, for, for other mitigations. Like ground cover planting, things like that. Are those also eligible for re-enrollment or is it just this?
Um, so right now we've currently got it at, uh, filter ships and native grass plantings. And also tree plantings are new and have to double check if we have, have them eligible or not. But, uh, right now for sure, filter ships and native grasses are, uh, eligible.
Good, thanks.
Tree and shrub is not eligible at this time, right?
Not is, okay.
Only filters and conservation cover.
The, the idea is that we want to try to sunset this at, at some point where, um. We, we wouldn't necessarily make it as common as it maybe is now, if that makes sense. Any other questions out there?
Ryan, Commissioner Schmidt, um, what was the original enrollment rate? And was it a ten-year? And also in the re-enrollment. Um, do you think you'd be able to stretch that contract from 10 years to say fifteen or even 20, even at, just at the hundred dollar rate?
Um, Mr. Chair Commissioner Schmidt, I don't know what the exact rate was when like Mr. Jurison signed up. Ten years ago, um, it's fluctuated, you know, right now it's currently around two hundred dollars an acre. Um, so. It probably was somewhere in that ballpark, give or take, you know, maybe fifty bucks one way or the other. Um, in terms of stretching it out further, uh. It's a possibility. I know some folks have turned us down because of the rate being. Um, so you know, this, so right now the hundred dollar an acre is half of the, uh, the going rate for a new one. And so that. For some hasn't moved the needle enough to where they didn't want to sign up for it. They thought that was too low. Um, so there is that possibility that if we stretch it out further, that you might lose more. Um, but it's always, you know, it's, it's worth the discussion for sure. I mean, when we do our. Um, annual docket review, that's a great item that I can put a note in it that we should at least have that kind of conversation.
Yep, thank you.
Yep, you're open.
Ryan, are you going to go through all of them or just the juror?
Oh, sorry. I wasn't sure if you, if you wanted to.
Is any, any questions on the Jerusalem one, I guess. Anybody have any questions on that?
So.
Very long.
Um, Mr. Commissioner, so I, I don't need to go through all the background of everything on this one. Uh, basically same. Exact same situation as the Jim Jurison one, same rate. Um, it's a smaller filter ship. It's one point one acres. Um, the location is obviously different. It's in, um, uh, these strips are around Connor ditch three and 10. Um, but same situation. These were the two that rose the highest on our priority list. And so. Um, same thing, we wanted to utilize twenty twenty-four funds. And so that's why it's been already administratively approved. And we're just informing the commissioners here tonight of, uh, that action. So I can, unless there's any questions, I'll keep, keep rolling here into the next one. Uh, this one now is different. Uh, so we were talking about. Well decommissions earlier, Commissioner Phillips had brought it up. So this is actually a situation where we've got a well sealing. Um, different. This is not a re-enrollment. Um, what happened here was, um. We wanted to once again utilize twenty twenty-four funds. And so this item couldn't wait until the January twenty twenty-five meeting. So it was once again administratively approved, um, by Vanessa. And what this was, it's a well sealing for Valerie Hagan. And, um, you know, she, uh, you can see her applicant share was close to three thousand. Um, we've got a cap on our well ceilings and she hit that at a thousand dollars. Um, but one piece of this too is, and this is not, um, any sort of, of precedent we're wanting to set, but. This, she did have the well sealed before. The contract was signed. And so anytime you're utilizing grant funds, that's a, a big no-no. We're not using any grant funds for this. We're only using. Uh, local funds and we felt as though as, as staff that. Um, it was warranted in, in this case, um, there's a high emphasis on. You know, groundwater contamination and, and preventing that. And so, um, the, the timeline of her. Uh, sealing it was kind of imperative that she did it. And then she was looking for the. Um, you know, caution afterwards, after having conversations with staff and learning about it. And so, um, we felt as though in this particular situation. Utilizing local funds with the small amount that it was that. Um, we would basically have a, a waiver in this case that, that you'd be eligible. So. But I want to emphasize this is not a precedent. This is, this is a, uh. Interesting case, which in my timeline of being here, I, I don't know if we've ever done it. So this is not. Something that's common and not likely to, you know, happen again anytime soon. Uh, so with that, I'll save any questions on this one.
Questions for Ryan? All right. Well, thanks, Ryan, and moving on to, uh, Melissa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so this next item is just to inform you of, uh, we went through the current plan. And made a list of all of the items. Whether they be goals or strategies or actions that we talked about in the current plan that we said we were going to do something. So in the cover letter, I just kind of explained that, that there are. There are a few items, um, on the list that you'll see in just a moment, um, that weren't completed. And so I wrote in that. Um, column, kind of an explanation of why we haven't completed that yet. So there's different reasons why, but case stuff right there. Um. So what I did is I went through the plan and, and. Some things are goals, some things are strategies, because in our strategies chapter, we. Wrote, um, a narrative of things that we were going to do rather than have a list. Um, an itemized list like. Like that's in our implementation section is actually a table, a list of different things. But the strategy is more narrative on some things. And so I pulled little sentences out of there. So as we go down the list, it's either checked as a goal or a strategy or an actual action item. That we took from, um, the implementation section. Um, I tried to reference what. Plan goal went with that goal, strategy or action item? If it had a priority area, who was responsible? And then whether it's completed, ongoing, in process or not completed. Um, so if we'll just scroll really slowly here, I'm just going to point out the ones that are not completed. So in that bar column, so. The first one here is to, um, so what we did. Is, um, we. I had GIS, um, do kind of a random selection of parcels in the WMO area. I think I asked him for, I don't know, a couple hundred. Parcels to just randomly select. And I had sent out letters to all of them. Asking if we could come and sample their wells. And what we were looking for is atrazine and arsenic. Um, and we had started looking for atrazine in twenty eleven in the last plan because we didn't really have any kind of baseline. Understanding of the quality of our groundwater. Besides what we, uh, the information that we get from water test kits that environmental health, um, distributes to people who need to test their well. Um, but we didn't really have an idea of, uh, how agriculture might be affecting groundwater. So we were looking for atrazine, which is a common, um. Common compound in, um, agricultural chemicals. So in this plan, we said that we would do it again. Um, and so. We haven't quite completed that yet, um, a second time. So I put in here that we'll budget for that in the twenty twenty-six budget to kind of inform. The county groundwater plan, because we are going to do also a county go groundwater plan, because we haven't had one in quite a long time. Um. So this next item, you know, there's, like I said earlier, I have three projects that are, um, going to be funded by that twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five watershed basin application funding. So that first one. There is going to be underneath that. And the second one. The ditch multiple purpose assessments. It's not actually an assessment. That's what we called it in the current plan. It's really a study. So that, um, I'll get into more detail on that one when we, um. Hopefully next month we'll have a grant agreement in place or at least the work plan submitted in E-Link. And then I'll go through some of those projects a little bit more detail with you, but. Uh. So that study, and then if you want to keep scrolling and then there's.
Melissa, I got a question on that.
Sure.
When you, I, when you, um, kind of took the random survey and. Contacted all these landowners, did you get a pretty good success rate on people volunteering to, to have their well sampled?
Um, it, it was okay. Actually, in the presentation that I'll go over next, I'm going to actually show some results from that and I have numbers in there. Um, so actually that's, that's coming up. I can show you what that is. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, but that's a good question. Yes.
Yeah, it's kind of fascinating me, but.
Yeah. Um, so then the, the third project there is, um, updating Sand Creek, um, TMDL model. So that's coming up. And then. The update, the total suspended solids trend analyses, um. We're actually having bar engineering, um. So in twenty twenty-three, we had our SWCD do, uh. Monitoring in the Credit River watershed. So they did the two main core sampling sites. And some synoptic sites, which are just sites that they visit on a monthly basis and take a, just a small number of, uh, parameter readings there. Um, so our SWCD did all that monitoring in twenty twenty-three. And in twenty twenty-four, they did the larger Sand Creek watershed monitoring, which was quite a heavy lift. Um, so this just talks to, uh, having Met Council update those total suspended solid trend analyses. And we're actually having bar, um, work with Met Council to, to do those trend analyses and put these in the reports that they're, they're creating for us. From all this data. So. I'm still waiting for the Credit River data analysis report from BAR, but I expect to have that before the end of February. And then I hope to get them started very soon on the Sand Creek data analysis. Um, now that our SWCD has all that data, uh, uh, QA QC'd for us, so. Um, so if you want to scroll a bit further. Um, so as you can see, we got quite a few things done. Um, so there were a couple of things, um. So in a couple of places in the plan, we said that we would, uh, do a plan amendment to update some information. And the first one was. You know how Troy talked earlier that, uh, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency every 10 years does this RAPS. Study RAPS stands for Watershed Restoration and Protection Strategy. It's basically. They're monitoring the, the larger watershed that covers multiple counties. And then they're doing a stressor analysis and completing a report on the condition of all those water bodies. Um, when that was complete in two thousand nine, no, sorry. When was that last one complete? Trying to remember. Maybe that was twenty. Hmm, sorry, I'll have to look up that date. But anyway. We didn't get a plan amendment completed, uh, during that time. And in, um. Our former manager, who used to be with the Scotty M M O retired, Vanessa came on. And then right after Vanessa came on, COVID hit. So we had to kind of adjust all of our priorities, um, for different things and different projects that we were working on. So. The couple of minor amendments that we were hoping to do, um, didn't get completed during this plan cycle. So if you want to scroll a bit further. And again, um, again, it's just another statement in a different section that talked about, uh, doing a plan amendment, um. And then that last, last item on there, um, I'll let Ryan talk to, about these next ones. These are in the implementation section. These are the larger CIP projects.
Uh, Mr. Chair Commissioners, so this Cedar Lake Wetland Restoration Wet Detention Basin. Is a, um, a field that's, uh, kind of on the south end of Cedar Lake. Um, where it has, uh, you know, a direct outlet into the lake. And upon, um, reaching out to the landowners, uh, they did. Give it consideration to do the project, but ultimately in, and they just were not sure what they wanted to do with that piece of property. Um, they weren't sure if they were maybe going to look at developing it. Um, which would actually kind of, uh, accomplish the goal of what we were looking at. So we were just looking to basically. Um, remove that, uh, that tile line and restore the wetland. Um. Uh, so they weren't sure what they wanted to do. So we did reach out, uh, tried to, you know, have a project go in and, and, um. They said no. So just so, you know, the new commissioners know, we. We, um, we work on a voluntary basis for these projects. So, you know, landowners have the ability to say no, and, and that's completely fine. And then I'll, Melissa, talk about the Cedar and McMahon Lakes alum treatment.
Yeah. So in this current plan, we had thought that maybe Cedar McMahon Lake would be ready for an alum treatment, which basically. Um, it's a treatment that you do to kind of lock phosphorus. Into the bottom sediment so that it can't be resuspended into the water column and cause algae blooms. Um, but after kind of review of water quality data for McMahon, we realized that it really doesn't need an alum treatment. And then, um, Cedar Lake just is not ready for an alum treatment. There's still, um. We believe many more years of, uh, working on some of the issues in Cedar Lake before it would be ready for an alum treatment, um. So that's why we didn't do that one yet.
The phase three Helena Broadway near Channel seven to control. So the, the name Helena Broadway is basically we use, uh, naming convention with the two closest, uh, road intersections. So. That project is located, um, just below the water tower, uh, in Jordan and Sand Creek. And unfortunately, the landowner during the design phase passed away. And upon giving the rest of the family some time, you know, to grieve and, uh, we reached back out to them and, and, um. You know, proposed to continue the project and, and they did not have an interest in, in doing it. And so, um, that's why that project never went in. Uh, Salisbury Hill, the County Road Fifty-One ravines. So this was kind of when I started, um, at Scott County. And so my understanding is that we were looking at, we did a study for reviewing both. Uh, Quarry Creek, which we ended up actually completing that CIP. And also Salisbury Hill were basically in that same report. And so. My understanding was they were kind of looking at just doing one. And I, I think Quarry Creek, uh, won out because, um, there's a little bit more traffic on. Um, the downstream road that was, uh, having that, um, that bridge plug up with sediment and, uh, flood. Um, and so that's partly why then we didn't pursue the Salisbury Hill, uh, ravine project was we. Did the Corey Creek project in, in its place.
So, Mr. Chair Commissioners, uh, for those of you who are, are newer or just as kind of a refresher. A really easy, quick and dirty way to look at this is. Our watershed plan is pretty much what we promised to do. It is literally our recipe book, our. Chore assignments. It's everything we pr, we promised to do basically for the next 10 years and how we're going to do it. This list basically assesses, did we do what we said we were going to do and how well did we do it? At the end of the day, we were very, very successful. We got almost everything done. There's, yes, there's a couple of things. Every watershed district or WMO. Has a few things that they just don't get done. You put really, you know. Really big potential projects on there. You might not get them done, but by and large, we were very, very successful. Um, probably one of the more successful watershed agencies. Around, um, in this last planning cycle. Uh, so we were very. We were very glad to see that in this assessment. Um, but that's literally what we're doing here is we're showing you all of the things that we promised to do. And, and did we do them? Um, some of these things obviously are going to be ongoing. We've been doing them. We're going to keep doing them. Couple of things we're going to end up finishing before the plan cycle ends. Uh, and that's kind of also how watershed districts and watershed management organizations are evaluated by the state. Uh, because the work we do takes so long to show effect, you know, something we might do in a lake. Might not improve water quality for ten, fifteen, twenty years. How do you assess if what you're doing is effective? How do you assess if what you're doing is responsible and efficient? And this is how, um, we assess that kind of information. So if you're looking for a really high level, quick, dirty, like why, what is this all for? What does this mean? That's kind of my two cents toss in there.
Ryan, can you scroll this to see if there's anything else?
That was helpful. Thank you.
Um, these might be the last two. So Blaha Ravine, uh, and Chestnut Ravine were both. Uh, CIPs were identified in the plan, but we would assist the cities. And so, um, the, the cities, you know, have yet to approach us about, you know, completing the project. So if we're not the lead on it, so if they were to come to us, um, and, and wanted to pursue it, we would have, you know, assisted however possible. But, um, that did not happen. I think that might be the last one.
Yeah. Is there any questions on this at all or? So basically we wanted to check ourselves to make sure there isn't something that we still need to do and we still have time to do it before the plan expires. Uh, but we wanted to show you that, uh, you know, looks like we're doing pretty good. Looks like we've almost accomplished everything that we said we were going to accomplish, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So, um, I guess moving on to the next to item F, watershed plan update issues prioritization, presentation and exercise.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Um, I wasn't going to go into great detail with this. I put it in the packet to just inform you that, um, so what I did is I took all of the input from the residents, the stakeholders. And doing those, uh, lake surveys. And I started to form some themes from that information. And so I put together just kind of the shorter document, just describing those themes and that feedback from everyone. Um, and so this was really meant for just kind of a summarized version for you. And I'll also provide this for the county board when we, when we do get to meet with them regarding issues. But that's really all I wanted to talk about with this, just something, one more thing for you to read. But it'll also kind of help you with, with this prioritization exercise that you're going to do, um, in a little bit here. With that, is there any questions on this at all or?
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you. Okay, I think there's just a short little memo just saying that I'm going to give a presentation. Yep. Okay, so if I can share my screen, Ryan.
And while she does that, I will add one anecdote, uh, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Uh, we did ask a lot of information too regarding groundwater specifically. Because, uh, groundwater and the rest of the work that WMO does kind of align in some extent. So rather than do a lot of citizen engagements separately for groundwater, it just didn't make any sense. So we asked more groundwater related questions at the same time as doing our general water resource questions. Uh, it may be that at the end of this, some of those quest, some of those issues, some of that input will be split off. Towards the county groundwater plan and, uh, some of it will just be kept with the WMO. But if you're, if you're curious why there seem to be a, a higher level of groundwater questions than, or groundwater issues than previously. Uh, that's probably why. Uh, that being said, groundwater has always been probably the top priority of the WMO for the last. Chunk, um. Uh, but that's just a little bit of additional insight, especially for the new commissioners who might not have been aware.
Okay, thank you, Vanessa. Um, I'm hoping everyone can see the presentation. Am I correct?
Yes, yep.
Okay. You're not seeing this little pop up box that says your computer's about ready to restart, do you?
No.
Okay, good. Okay, so I got a, a few slides here to give you some information kind of on the. The watersh, the current watershed conditions and kind of a background to help. Give you some more information to do the prioritization exercise on issues and concerns. So I will try to. Go through some of this quickly. Um, I just wanted to describe your role, um, with this. So, you know, all we ask is, you know, if you can come prepared and, and if you're able to review the materials before the meeting. And, um, you know, we went through the same kind of bullet list with our technical advisor committee, you know, just respect all input and be open minded. You know, not all voices are represented and. We want all, we want to hear from all of you, you know, if possible. So this step up, step back is just make sure you're heard and what makes space for others to be heard. And we've had great active participation so far and we're loving that, that's for sure. If you have any other communications about the plan update, just route them through me. Um, and then, you know, we just always ask that you work with the spirit of brainstorming. And, and we'll keep everything on the table in the beginning of the process and then we'll start kind of narrowing things down as we go along here. And then our role will be to, you know, make sure that all the agendas are prepared and all the materials that you'll need. To make informed decisions will be emailed out at least a week in advance. Um, we'll provide the data and information to help you make informed decisions. We'll start and end on time and we'll, you know, we'll all be respectful and, and open minded. And when we're in person, we'll bring snacks and drinks.
Oh, Melissa?
Yeah.
Sorry, I did note, we usually mail it out Wednesday, so it's not technically a week in advance. That was my bad. I should have cut that.
Okay. Um, so I did update this plan schedule to change that we, we did adjust doing kind of a phase two in June. But we did start, uh, back in July with a official kickoff meeting with the WPC and the county board. And our public input process went through September. Um, since then, we've had, uh, a meeting with our technical advisory committee and today is with you. And oh, sorry, I did forget to update that, that we aren't actually going to the board now until March. But our plan, our current plan expires in December twenty twenty six. So it's my goal to, to have it hopefully adopted a little bit early. Um, the Board of Water and Soil Resources, it does do kind of like the final review on our plan and approves our plan. Um, I believe there's a couple of meetings towards the end of twenty twenty six that we can't go to their board, uh, with the plan. So we, we hope that we can have everything ready to go for their approval. Uh, more in the fall rather than towards the end of twenty twenty six. So that's the goal here. Um, there are specific requirements in Minnesota Rule eighty four ten for developing watershed plans. We do have to have an executive summary, that land of water resources inventory that I talked about that we're working on. We have to have measurable goals for at least these five things. And then we do have to have a prioritize implementation on table with scheduled cost, funding source, responsible party. And, and then talk about an evaluation procedure in the plan. So there, those are just kind of the bare minimum. Um, just really quickly, that's, so the beginning of the process started with, um, a board action to. The board allowed us to start the, the update of the watershed plan. And then after that, I sent a letter to all of the kind of agency partners. So all the state agencies and our local, uh. Watershed groups, um, surrounding counties, all of our cities. Um, even some of the departments in Scott County like parks, um, asking for their input on what are, what should be our priorities? And, and what do they see as issues and concerns? And so that feedback produced, and I just did it kind of a general topic that, you know, most of the comments we received. Were regarding surface water concerns, mostly surface water quality concerns. And then groundwater quality and sustainability kind of rate next. And then I kind of put them in order from there. But, um, so we do start out with asking that stakeholder group, uh, first, and then we have a kickoff meeting. So that kickoff meeting happened on July twenty second. And Vanessa went through a couple of different, um, exercises with the WPC and WMO board. And one of the things she asked is to kind of rank their, uh, overall importance of these general topics. And that's how that kind of, um. Fell out of there is that groundwater was their most important topic and then followed by natural systems. And the input, uh, with natural systems ranking so high is, um, was really nice to see. Um, because I, I don't remember that following so high, um, last time when we did the current plan. Uh, so that's good to see because as you'll see, as I get into this, um, presentation that we do have, uh, fish and macro and vertebrate. Um, impairments on a lot of our streams. So this next subject I will let Ryan talk about.
Yeah, um, so this is just to kind of give you some background, uh, with Scott County and the, uh, geology and, and history. So, um, you know, there's things that, that we, uh, since settlement have had on the landscape that have. Uh, you know, posed challenges for us, development, agriculture, um, just to name a few. But also, um, you know, some of this is just, uh, based on our, you know, landscape, our setting. And, um, you know, natural causes. So, uh, to kind of give you a background of, you know, Scott County and how that can play a role. Um, if you've ever heard of, uh, you know, ten thousand years ago, we had Lake Agassiz. That was kind of up in the Red River Valley and then extended up into, to Canada too. So this giant glacial lake, um, that eventually was eroded by what, um, was called Glacial River Warren. So Glacial River Warren, uh, formed from erosion that, um, that led to the draining of that lake. Glacial River Warren is what we now know as the Minnesota River Valley. So, um, kind of on that, uh, western part of Scott County, uh, you can see it on this, uh, hill shade map. Um, you know, the kind of that line, you, you see it kind of almost like a break. And that is where the river used to be. Um, obviously now the Minnesota River is a much smaller, uh, river within that basin. You can see it on this map here. You, you actually see the, the river itself is just a fragment of what that Glacial River Warren used to be. So massive river, one of the fastest flowing, uh, rivers in, in the history of time. Um, you know, was there and, and what happened is that continually just down cut, right? And so everything else that fed into that Glacial River Warren down cut as well. And so we've had, um, a lot of, of emphasis has been on Sand Creek, for instance. Um, part of the challenge of Sand Creek is that it flows through a bluff area. Um, just between north of Cedar Lake to the wastewater treatment ponds in the city of Jordan. It's, it's almost a couple of hundred feet of elevation drop for that stream, which, um, you can see by the, the, uh, photos that are in here. You end up with these just massive sloughs, uh, of when that stream is cutting through that bluff area. And it can get outside of its floodplain like it is in this instance and pushes up against that bluff wall. You just get mass wasting happening with the stream. And so Sand Creek is one of the biggest sediment contributors to the Minnesota River. Um, and so this is partly it. This middle Sand Creek has ten to fifteen times. The, um, total suspended solids, sediment, um, in this stretch. And we know that from monitoring and it's because of these bluffs. And so we've had a heavy emphasis on, on, um, curving these and trying to reduce the erosion. But, uh, the point of this is just to kind of let you know that, you know, some of this is, you know, somewhat natural and, and it's a challenge we face. And we're still trying to improve that, but to give you perspective, that, um, photograph there is actually one of the CIPs that we, um, uh, built. So from stream to top of bluff is a hundred feet roughly. So it's a giant site and you can see how, you know, exposed that is and how many dump truck loads of sediment are ending up in the, the stream. Um, because of that, and, and that's why we're focusing on those areas to reduce that, that sediment loading. So just giving you some background.
Ryan, where in the picture was the project? Was it the left picture?
Um, so these pictures are both pre-project. Um, so the, the project itself, and if you're curious, I can send you photos of it after it's done. It's at the, between the, basically where the water meets land. Um, and what it was is a series of log jams where it was built out into the stream. And what it does is it relieves pressure on that bluff. So flow is pushed away from that bluff. And in between the structures, it creates an eddy and that, uh, basically will allow sediment to drop. So in time, you're hopefully building a shelf across that whole, um, toe of that slope. And what that's going to do then, as the upper bluff still erodes, now you've got a shelf for that sediment to build on. And as that slope continues to fall back, you actually might get some vegetation. When that bluff reaches, it's called an angle of repose. If it's straight up and down, you're not getting anything to grow on it. But as it slowly tips back, there's a certain point where vegetation starts to grow on it. So it's not preventing the erosion. What it's trying to do is reduce the amount of sediment that ends up in the stream as it continues to lay itself back. If that makes sense.
Got it. Thank you.
And I will, uh, just for the benefit of our new commissioners as well, um. It happens to be that the WMO is one of the leaders of these types of projects in the state. We're not usually a toot our own horn kind of folk, but it is worth, worthwhile knowing that. Uh, a lot of the other state agencies, uh, and other water resource agencies, uh, look to our projects such as this. Um, for leadership and as an example, uh, you'll notice the Board of Water and Soil Resources has frequently highlighted these capital projects that Ryan has helped put in. Uh, so it's one of the few things that we are especially proud of and sometimes we'll kind of talk about more than others. Um, the quirky part is that they're usually tucked away and so nobody sees them. So probably our, our biggest, uh, one of our biggest successes is something that most folks never see.
Okay. Uh, moving on, I just kind of wanted to give you an idea of, uh, what the general land use is in the county. And this is in percentages. I got this from my council, but, you know, there's still forty two percent approximately of land and agriculture. And still about twenty six percent land that's undeveloped. Of course, these numbers are from twenty twenty and we still have more development happening. Um, but there's still a lot of, you know, undeveloped land in the county. And so we do know that more development is expected, so that is something to, to keep in mind and. That, you know, there, there's small percentages of homes. And, you know, when you do look at a map and you see all the impervious surfaces. Um, especially with the cities here, as we see here, it seems like there's, there would be more impervious surfaces, but really, um. You know, Credit River just incorporated, so it's still a lot of, uh, rural residential landscape. But, um, I do have another slide coming up that'll talk about areas that we're going to be seeing more development occur. Um, so what I wanted to, oh.
Clayton, Clayton Wagner, uh, question. In the, in the last slide, does the county have part of their master plan to escalate any of those? Like park, the one that comes to mind is the Park Recreational Preserve. It's like, is like, do those projects just come as they come? Or is, is there like, uh, a goal that the board is pushing to reshape?
Um, well, I do know that, that Parks does have master plans on, on the different parks that you'll see on some of the upcoming maps. Um. I know that a lot of those master plans, I just talked to Patty from our Parks Department. She said a lot of those master plans are currently kind of out of date, that they're, they're doing more, um, than what's in those current plans. Um, as far as the county board's goals, I don't know, Vanessa, if you have anything to add about the county board's goals for parks. But, uh, we do hear from the residents, because the county takes, uh, a residence survey that. Our residents definitely like the parks and trails and, um, they'd like to see more of that. Uh, but as far as. If more parks is going to be included in the county, it's, it's really dependent on if they can acquire more land from landowners and then the cost of that land.
Yeah, are you, Commissioner Wagner, are you looking, uh, for? Yeah, are you Commissioner Wagner, are you looking uh for parks specifically or just. How land use is being developed within the county?
Trying to find the audio button, uh yeah, I I guess if if there was a better idea of. How like what the goal is, what's what's the future state with regard to, is there a push to um. Uh like directionally implement more parks, I mean, I know with like the Blakely Park, the the one on the very left-hand side, that's. That's obviously a a long-term strategic plan for act, you know, acquire in the some. Private landowners and things like that, like what's what's the future state that that's laid out right now?
Uh okay, excellent, okay, so excellent question, so um. For ease of simplicity here, we'll just go with the the Three Rivers County Park System, uh because obviously uh cities and townships have their own parks as well, which are. Basically independent of of that system, but um so yeah, our our Parks Department, which they just sit next to us. At the at the building, they're not far away or anything, um they're part of our our department overall, uh they do have their own kind of. Planning process and I know like Melissa said, yes, Patty is in the process of of working on updating many of those. Now that being said, the work that we're doing right now will feed into that process and actually. Help them prioritize areas and we also provide input into that process, so basically. What we do here feeds into them and then it's also a little bit of vice versa, if if parks is a specific area that they are looking at. Developing sooner rather than later and they're kind of also like us, they're kind of in process. We'll generally kind of work it into our plan as places where we can do more restoration work, more protective work. Um we're just lucky we happen to be able to work very closely and back and forth with them because they're part of our department. Um so it's probably the best answer I can give you right now is that they're they're kind of like us in that. They are working on updating a lot of their parks plans, um and that our role is to help guide them as far as. The water resources and keeping those protected and working that into the park system and then as well when there are opportunities to do that. So we did that with um the it's a it's in Spring Lake Township, the um. I'm not Spring Lake Township, I'm sorry, I apologize, uh in the city of Prior Lake um. In Spring Lake itself, that that park, we we did a little bit of extra work with the park system. To help get a little bit more water resource protection in natural areas, worked into that plan, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Great question.
Yes, great questions, so this might also be a little bit helpful too, so this is a map from the twenty forty. County Comprehensive Plan, so this is what's kind of planned for zoning um. Into the future that this whole white area is going to stay in what's called agricultural preserve, so one per forty for houses. Um and then this transition area, which is where it'll go down to, you know, one per ten. Acre clusters, um these yellow areas kind of surrounding the cities are the the urban expansion areas. Um and you can see along the one sixty-nine corridors where, you know, the city's been kind of planning for that commercial and industrial. Um growth and then some of these other areas over here, you know, in Spring Lake Township. Are going to um eventually be, you know, one per two and a half acres and then again, one per ten acres. Um over in this area. Um and the purpose to showing you this is you'll see as we go, as we progress through these slides is that. Keep in mind where this planned growth is when you think about uh when you go through the prioritization exercise and think about what. Uh what might be issues or what might be concerns, um so let me get advanced to the next slide here. So so more development is expected, so this is the orderly annexation areas, these brown areas. And not all of these are completely up to date, uh we learned, um Bell Plains, uh. So what happens is a city uh works with the township and they put together an agreement to. Annex certain parcels in, um sometimes they give a time period in that agreement and sometimes they don't. Um but Bell Plain just updated theirs and I wanted to put the layers of streams on here so you can understand that. If these parcels start getting annexed into the city, you know, there are water resources that could be affected and we want to make sure that the city is going to. You know, plan to protect um those water resources. Um New Prague, currently their uh agreement with the township was done last time in nineteen seventy-eight. But we just learned from the city that they are now in talks with the township to update uh this agreement, so we expect this. Annexation area to grow, um Elko New Market. Uh does not have uh an agreement with the township, um but they are planning on growing, you know, out. From the their current boundaries, um I believe the Jordan and Prior Lakes agreements are fairly new. So that's about the extent that we uh can expect them to grow and then the Shakopee and Louisville Township. Um I do know that they they, in their agreement, they created zones and I think it's up in this area that where they labeled like zone. E and F that they can't annex those areas until like the year twenty fifty, so there are some areas that. Might be annexed in sooner than others, but the purpose of this was just to show you that. There is growth or more development expected and we don't really know exactly the timeline.
And then actually, a good example of a project we recently did, uh the city of Prior Lake reached out to us again. Uh for Campbell Lake and because that was an area that was going to be annexed soon. And they wanted assistance with developing a regional stormwater plan, so that as development. Moved out in that direction, the natural resources were already protected, the storm, the regional stormwater system was already in place, which makes. The development transition much, much easier and rather than piecemeal, so for example, we have an area. Where there is a much larger stormwater pond that many different properties could potentially feed into rather than having nine hundred. Ineffective rain gardens kind of thing, uh and so it it's kind of like lying road infrastructure, if you can lay the road infrastructure, it makes the development easier. So we worked with them to do something similar with water resources, so that's an example of how. The growing development and and how we work with like cities and townships in that kind of area.
Vanessa, uh Commissioner Phillips here, um can you go to the last slide? Um that area of land south and west of Spring Lake, is that the Prior Lake Expansion Area or Shakopee?
Uh right here.
That.
By like thirteen and two eighty-two.
Thirteen, two eighty-two, yeah, it's south and west of Spring Lake.
Yeah, that would be Prior Lake's expansion area.
Okay, so they're looking to expand there to the west, okay.
Yeah.
All right, just curious, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted to show you that because of our underlying geology, we have um a lot of aggregate deposits, which are these. Brown areas or s- sand gravel deposits throughout the county and as you can see, a lot of them lie along this one sixty-nine corridor. Um as we move through these slides, you'll see that these are, these are some sensitive areas um because of the underlying geology, so. Just keep that in mind, um and I also wanted to put this on here because we did have some comments. Um from our residents that they were concerned about more mining occurring um in the county. You will also get a PDF of this whole presentation, um so you can look back at some of these. Um so I just wanted to show you this really quickly to show you that there are critical habitat and scenic areas throughout the county, this is actually from our current plan. So it does need to be updated, but we do have areas along this corridor that have rare animal or rare rare plants. Uh we also have a lot of rare animal or plants in our parks, um and sometimes outside of the parks, uh but there are. Federal and state recreation areas along this corridor as well and as you'll see, a lot of the parks um information is outdated. Because this map was created back in twenty eighteen, but that was the whole purpose of this map is just to show you those different critical habitat areas that we do have. We do have floodplain, um this was updated not that long ago, um so the floodway. These dark blue areas um uh cannot be built in. Um we do have flood fringe areas, um and I don't have my notes in front of me. To remember uh what the rules are for some of these, Vanessa, do you remember flood fringe?
Yeah.
Okay, if you can help me out.
Yeah, as as we mentioned, I or maybe we haven't, I apologize, we wear two hats, so um. Your WMO staff is also your county water resources staff, so one of the hats we also happen to wear is the Floodplain Administration hat. Um and uh flood way. Is, as Melissa said, we we don't allow any um homes or buildings within the floodway. Flood fringe, there is some very, very limited developments um and encroachment in the flood fringe. Um board has always has has directed us to um be pretty um. Uh proactive, uh we have found that the more we get ahead of development and the more we help people through the development process. By by getting them the information on flood ahead of time, floodway and flood fringe, it's it's much, much better. So like for way, for example, flood fringe, you can put in, you know, you can put in some roads and you can. Put in some parking areas and some buildings certainly, um but you know, for example, you might want to put in a building. That has an attached parking, well, the building might be allowed with the building pad, but then. Once you put fill in for the parking, that actually exceeds, they need a conditional use permit, anyway, it you can see goes on and goes on. So the more we're able to get a get ahead with development and help help folks through the process, um the better. Uh and I say that because at the end of the day, yes, we do certainly have some development allowed in the flood fringe, uh but it can be very complicated. And uh we try to help people through it as best we can. Um by and large, county does not prefers not to put buildings in the flood fringe, but um that doesn't mean that they're absolutely not allowed.
And then as you can see, you know, the general floodplain, there's a lot of gray areas throughout the WMO. Um so that general floodplain just means that there's no flood study that's been done, um so it's treated like the floodway. Um until a study is complete. Um this is a map from our current plan, just to show you that there are a lot of surface waters, um and so ditches are included on here, the national wetland inventory. Is included on here, but we do have a lot of water in Scott County.
Melissa, one sec, uh Commissioner Phil does need to step out, um is it okay if we have the vice chair?
Sure.
I apologize, but it's a meeting I thought I could get to.
Okay, we we don't actually usually run past six, so that's not, this will be one of the like, one of the only ones during the year, I think we'll run past six, so.
Yeah, there was a lot of good questions.
My apologies, but thank you.
Yeah, no worry, thank you for stepping up. Okay, um so these are all the streams in the WMO. That are on the federal impaired waters list, um so and you'll get a PDF of this, so you can look at it a little bit more in detail. But I did uh list all the streams, list their impairments and then I kind of totaled everything over here by the impairment or pollutant category. Just to show you that we have a lot of water bodies that don't meet the fish species that they should have. Or the macro invertebrates, which are those water insects that fish eat. Um a lot of streams are impaired that they don't have those um species that they they should have um from other reference streams. And we do have a lot of water bodies that um exceed E. coli bacteria um standards, so. You know, as we get deeper into this, we'll have to talk about strategies on how to uh work towards improving those impairments. So our lakes, we have several lakes that are listed on the federal impaired waters list, you know, the highest um. The highest number of impairments is mercury, which we don't work on mercury reductions. Um that mercury is uh really uh transported um by atmospheric. Um transport kind of mechanisms, um so. Really, there are a lot of uh water bodies throughout the entire United States that have mercury impairments and that's more of a state managed issue. Uh but we would uh talk about managing for nutrients and we do have one lake that is um on the impaired waters list for not meeting. Uh fish species that it it should have. We do have a lot of highly rotable soils uh throughout Scott County in the WMO and this uh map was created by um SWCD. This is in their comp plan and I thought it was a really nice map to show um that we do have areas that have highly rotable soils. Um so it just kind of in in a lot of different areas of the county, uh so. That's just something to keep in mind um as we go along here. Um I I really liked this map in their comp plan as well, this is uh they did an assessment of crop land, that's when it within three hundred feet of a water. So as you can see, all these different areas that, you know, there's there's crop land um close to those water bodies. And Troy, I know you mentioned in your report that um, you know, the you look at buffer compliance law, is there anything else? So you did kind of talk about that, is there anything else that you want to say maybe about this map or do you think it was covered in your?
Um I guess, you know, we'll um, what I would say is that I think that going. Or we we do have to do these status reviews because there's. There's a tendency, I think, to migrate into buffer areas and we got to kind of stay on top of that and and like the first round of inspections we did. For the buffers in many of these streams, you know, have the buffer requirement. We saw very good compliance initially, but as time goes on, we see a little encroachment, a little more encroachment. And so we got to just keep folks honest and I'm not saying they're intentionally doing it, but when you have big equipment out there and maybe you have hired hands, they don't really understand. You know, the hard edge that that buffer really has, so um. The thing to note too is that there are, there are, as I mentioned, a number of exemptions, so. Well, we often talk about, you know, streams are required to have this fifty-foot buffer, that's that's not necessarily the case. In every situation, so but um yeah, we'll we'll keep on top of that and. Three hundred is a good, a good number, um and the reason we we picked three hundred is because. You generally have what we call sheet and real erosion can happen for a length of three hundred feet. Generally, once, once water flows more than three hundred feet, it starts concentrating into bigger and bigger. Like rivulets and you start getting uh more what we call classic type of erosion. So anything within three hundred feet is susceptible to um degradation that is. In many cases, not even visible because the amount of erosion is happening is is very thin, very, you know, you don't see these classic. Signs of erosion, but nonetheless, sediment and nutrients are leaving the field, uh and many times it's not even, you know, noticeable.
Great, thank you for that, Troy, um okay, thanks for hanging in there, we're getting close to being done here, um. So I did look at some of kind of our major streams and some of our lakes and I did put together a kind of a water body trend analysis. So the good thing is Met Council did update some of the trends for Sand Creek and Credit River and we we are on an improving. Trend for total phosphorus, nitrates and total suspended solids for Sam Creek. Uh Met Council has a monitoring station right at Jordan, um and so they do monitor Sam Creek. And they monitor Credit River, they have a monitoring station at the end of Credit River in the city of Savage, um so Credit River is also. Improving for nitrates and total suspended solids, but they didn't see any significant trend in total phosphorus. Um oh, sorry, oh, whoa. Um, oh, sorry, oh, wow, I didn't know I could do that. Um, we do have some lakes with an improving trend, uh, O'Dowd and McMahon have improving total phosphorus. Um, O'Dowd is one of the our better water quality lakes in the WMO. So we we want to, we don't want to see a uh a decreasing trend in anything in that lake for sure. Um, the Minnesota River, uh, I don't have any updated information yet to update that, but it back in two thousand nine, it was improving for total phosphorus and total suspended solids. Um, Cedar Lake is definitely a challenge. Uh, I can get more into that depth in another meeting, but Cedar Lake has some history to where I think it's going to be a challenge to really uh improve that lake. But so far, it has some improving trend of phosphorus, but no change in transparency or chlorophyll A. Cleary Lake is monitored by Three Rivers Park District. Um, and I think over the three years of drought that we've had, um, took its toll on Cleary Lake. Um, so it's on a declining trend, and then Thole Lake is also improving. The nice thing to see about Sand Creek and Credit River uh with an improving trend is we've put a significant amount of money in larger CIP uh projects that Ryan works on for Sand Creek. So it's good to to actually be able to measure that improvement. So this is a map from the Minnesota um Geological Atlas for Scott County, just showing the infiltration rates, meaning how long does it take from something that ends up on the surface to uh reach groundwater? So as you can see from this and this, you know, this one sixty-nine corridor area, you know, there is a lot of sensitivity and susceptibility uh to possible contamination just because of our underlying geology in this area. Um, so you you can look at this later on, once I send you this PDF. But, you know, just notice that there are areas that it that there are more susceptibility to groundwater contamination. So we'll get into strategies on that um in the coming months. There is a lot of groundwater quantity or groundwater level maybe monitoring that happens um throughout Scott County. This came from a DNR's website, um, in our SWCD staff um contracts. I don't know if it's a contract with the DNR, but they do a lot of the fieldwork on going out to these observation wells and measuring the water levels in there for the DNR. Um, the different colors of these uh pins uh just represent a different aquifer that it's measuring. So blue, green, and the brown is just measuring different aquifers in the county. And then this is a map of the drinking water supply management areas. So these are just areas that um have to do with wells, like the city wells, and that these areas, um, you know, we want to be conscious of any, oops, any possible contamination that could happen um in these areas. And the Department of Health, I know, works with the cities. The cities do have to put together a wellhead protection plan to make sure that their wells um uh that no contamination gets introduced into their wells. Um, but I just wanted to point out that there are these management areas throughout Scott County in a very large area up in this area along that, you know, close to that one sixty-nine corridor. Um, so this is results from uh water test kits that are sold through the county, um, through our environmental health department. Um, staff at the, in our environmental health department puts together kind of this graph for us every year. Um, so just to show you that this is the number of kits that have been sold and what they're testing for. Um, and in twenty twenty-four, it shows an increase in the percent of lead and manganese tests that were over the standard. It's mostly because more of our residents are becoming aware that we have these tests available, and more people are starting to test their wells to see what's in their groundwater. Um, we know that high arsenic is linked to depths of bedrock. I don't know if you do this, but we do have um areas throughout the county that uh groundwater wells will measure arsenic. Um, I've tested our well, we've, we've got arsenic coming from our well as well, so. Um, and throughout the county, there's a lot of heavier soils, a lot of clay soils that uh we think, you know, do a pretty good job of filtering out um nitrates. So in twenty eighteen, you did this random, oh, was there a question?
Clayton, I hate to ask a question if we've gone over this much, but I just want to touch on, um, is, does it fall to this body to get that baseline and that future uh observations with regard to like everything that's going on in the Elko New Market area with the Niagara bottle implant? Or is that state-level DNR? And I don't want to jump into, I did, it was a yes or no question, we don't have to jump into it, I can ask it later, because for in the we're being conscious of time, but that was my question.
I I will very uh quickly answer yes and no, so I will offline go over that with you.
Thank you, that's all I need.
It's a great question.
So in twenty eighteen, this is getting to your question, Commissioner Phillips. So in twenty eighteen, when I did that random private well sampling, we only had thirty-four people agree to let us come and sample their wells. Um, so we tested for chloride, nitrates, arsenic, and atrazine. Um, as you can see, the results here, you know, twenty-nine percent uh detected the presence of chloride. We think they were more at a um kind of a baseline um already existing in the geology level. We we looked for chloride because we wanted to see if any um areas were being impacted by, you know, our winter maintenance. You know, chlorides are getting into our surface waters, we wanted to know, are they getting into our groundwater? So that was the purpose for measuring uh for chlorides. Um, you know, nitrates have actually been pretty low uh throughout uh most of the county, I believe. There are some areas where they are a little high. Um, you know, seventy-three percent of the wells detected arsenic. That's um, you know, and we've had more people sample their wells for arsenic since then, and it's, you know, it's pretty widespread. Um, there are a few areas of hotspots, um, but it's pretty widespread throughout the entire state, actually. Um, and then the good thing is, we still, we detected no atrazine in any of the wells. Um, okay, so this is the last slide, so what I wanted to show you here is, you know, we have, I believe it's a hu- one hundred twenty-six years of precipitation and temperature data. Um, and so the DNR climatology office holds all that data, and you can go on their website and you can actually create these uh graphs yourself. So I was looking for trends in average temperature, and this is data very specific to Scott County itself. And as you can see, from uh over the hundred and twenty-six years of data, you can see this trend line increasing. So we've been increasing in temperature point one eight degrees Fahrenheit per decade. And this bottom graph is for precipitation. As you can see, again, that purple trend line is increasing. So we've been increasing in precipitation, point three four inches per decade over the last hundred and twenty-six years. So we are getting wetter and we are getting warmer. So that's it for some background information, I just wanted to give you some information to kind of help you make some uh more informed um uh decisions on this exercise that you're going to get. Um, so just to go over quickly again, in March, it's our hope to go over some draft goal statements. Um, maybe talk a little bit about prioritizing water bodies, how that might look, and then do a needs assessment activity. And then in April, for sure, I'll be doing, going through that gaps analysis, figuring out where are, do we have any gaps? Um, and then, again, we're going to eventually need to figure out how do we prioritize? And how do we target things that will then inform what our strategies will be for the plan? Uh, really quickly, so that phase two public engagement, I was going to see if anybody had any ideas on um, you know, what we should do maybe for an activity for that phase two, but I think we kind of already talked about that, that maybe that gaps analysis will kind of help us um uh determine what what we're missing and what we want to hear uh from the public. Otherwise, does anyone else have any other ideas on that phase two public input? Okay, hearing none, oh, so the next steps is we will email you a link to a survey, and I'm going to email that out um tonight. And then if we would ask if you could, you know, click on that link, and if you need to review any of this information, I'm going to send all this out to you. And if you could complete that survey by this Friday, by end of day, that would be great. Um, so we'll take that and we'll go through all that information and kind of do some data analysis and then um come back to you with uh those results. And then again, if you have any questions about the plan update, you know, you can reach out to me directly and I can help answer those questions. And if it's something that everybody would benefit from hearing, then I can discuss it at um our next meeting.
Then, just to put things in to perspective, so that survey is taking all of that initial input we've gotten, and it's created a bunch of issues, but now as, you know, part of our governing body, we really need you to kind of tell us what you think is the most important, least important, literally helping us rank these issues and and helping us get your guidance on how how much time, effort, and focus we will spend on these in the next planning cycle. So it's one of those rare times when taking a survey will make a huge difference. It will.
So with that email, I'll have the survey link, and I also have a separate document kind of giving you instructions. Um, so it's a little bit more information on how to answer uh each of those kind of issue or concern statements that we heard from that phase one input process. So we kind of paraphrased some things, categorized some things together, and made a list of what people thought were issues. And so we'll have you kind of rank those. Um, so that instruction sheet will explain everything.
Melissa, I just want to, can they, can they pause and go back to it? Because now that I think about it, it's kind of a longer survey. Or does it, is it kind of like a one and done?
Um, I think it's a one and done, you can't save and go back to it, you have to finish it once you start.
Okay, so maybe it's like look at it once and then close it out and go back to it after you've kind of looked at it and know how much time you're going to need?
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yep. Yeah, so that's all I had, I'll stand for any questions if anybody has any. Sorry, we went over, but there was some great questions tonight.
Uh, Ryan, do you want to throw the agenda back up there, please?
For sure. I think it's a, John is the the next one. Yeah.
Yes.
I will make a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I actually been slacking.
We have a motion and a second?
Yep. All right, Commissioners, I will do roll. Uh, Commissioner Schmidt.
Hi.
Commissioner Phillips.
Hi.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
And Commissioner Fredericks.
Hi.
Thank you so much, Commissioners, we very much appreciate it.
Yes, thank you so much for hanging in there.
Thank you all so much for uh being so informative and obviously all the great work you're doing, so I appreciate your patience with me.
No, we love it, uh, it, you uh, you came into the probably the biggest avalanche of information you will probably ever encounter, so. Um, it's not usually this much and this much at once, so you, we appreciate, we very, very much appreciate it. And um it just takes time to take it all in, and we're here to help, we'll happily chat with you whenever you want. Um, sometimes probably more than you want, feel free to call us, we can schedule a meeting, lunch, whatever. Um, absolutely, and I will definitely, I can touch base with you again too regarding groundwater. Uh, because that's a a great conversation too. And it's weird and complicated, a lot of it has to do with, we don't like duplication, so we tend to just find the gaps and try to figure out what our role is to fill the gaps. But, yep.
Appreciate it.